Good afternoon, everybody. In accordance with Section forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee Adjustment of the City Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful, non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we're meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you'll be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We also ask you mute your devices to your call on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time, and at all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect that instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the committee of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for decision by email. Please ensure you include your name, your address, your email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. For the hearing procedure today, I'll call each item in the order listed on the agenda. When an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation, if desired, and when the committee does not require presentation, applicants can advise the chair if they wish to speak to the committee. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I'll let you know when you're reaching your five-minute mark. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first. They'll make a presentation to the committee, and if we have questions, we will ask them of the applicant. Please be advised that we cannot entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today, and if there are revisions, we may decide to defer the application if it is substantially revised, just to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we call in speakers in the hearing room first, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they finish their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent will have an opportunity to rebut only those issues raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. All right. We have any declarations of panel or staff for items in the two P M. or four P M. slot? Mr. Bartolo?
Yes, I'll have to recuse myself from item number eleven. I know one of the parties that's going to be presenting there today.
Okay, thank you. I have a declaration myself of interest. That's going to be item number twenty, please. Yes, item number twenty. I know the agent on my speakers list that'll be speaking for that item today, so I will be stepping out as chair. Mr. Bartolo has offered to step in for me to handle that item. Any other declarations of interest? None, all right. Let's, before we get started with our items at the two P M. slot, let's deal with our deferral requests. That's one thousand Carl Hall Road. The purpose of the application is to permit a manufacturing use within a proposed one-story building. We have one variance before us for this application related to use, on file material from the applicant, report from community planning, and metro links. We have our agent with us. Sixteen. We'll get to fifteen next.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Fabulous. My name is Emily Reesman. I'm a planner with Urban Strategies, agent on behalf of the one thousand Carl Hall Road request, and our request for deferral this afternoon is to ensure that a proper notice goes out that reflects the full extent of variances that will be required. There was a little bit of a mix-up wherein only one of the requested variances was listed on the notice. So we'd like to return to see you next month, or whenever that proper notice goes out.
All right, and for the record, your address?
One ninety-seven Spadina Avenue in Toronto.
All right, thank you. Okay, no other speakers on this item? All right, let's take this into committee. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move deferral to allow the applicant to prepare a full list of variances for proper notification.
All right, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? That's unanimous, that application is deferred. All right. Item number, actually just jumping back one, item number fifteen, three zero two Spring Garden Avenue. The purpose of this application is to construct a new detached dwelling with an integral garage and rear deck. Variances for side main wall height, main pedestrian entrance height, number of stories, lot coverage, front yard landscaping, second-story platform area, and stair width, on file material from the applicant, memo from urban forestry, letter of opposition from one ninety-seven Alfred Avenue, as well as a late combined letter of objection from one eighty-six, one ninety-one, one ninety-two, one ninety-three, one ninety-four, one ninety-five, and one ninety-seven Alfred Avenue, and a late staff report from community planning. That is what I have on file. All right, we have our agent or applicant with us? Your name and address?
Yeah, hello, committee members. My name is Rin Fong John from two eighty Shoper Avenue East, Unit two oh three.
All right, and requesting a deferral?
I request a deferral for this hearing.
Okay, and what's the reason for your request?
I want to change the drawings, you know, it's more, change the drawings to, according to the staff report.
All right, very well. Hold on there. We do have some other speakers that have come down in person today. Has anybody come down to speak to item number fifteen, three zero two Spring Garden Avenue? Yes, please come down to the mic, whoever wants to come first. And just start by stating your name and address for us, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, attendees. My name is Patzi Wong. I am from address one ninety-three Alfred Avenue. Today, I'm representing a total of nine household on Alfred Avenue and Spring Garden as well.
Okay, just pause there for a moment. So today, we have just received a request to defer. So as you know, I, we're only going to speak to the request for deferral today and make a decision on that, and hopefully, if the deferral request is granted, the matter will be held at a different date. But it seems that the applicant would like to make some revisions based on some feedback they received, so might be in everyone's interest if we allow that process to unfold.
I understand. May I just please add some comment? I just want to show you that this is the neighbors, that those are the representatives for today.
Sure.
I hope that the committee, you know, respect the time that we have spent for preparing this hearing. Myself and, you know, the upcoming neighbor, Peter, we actually took a day off, half a day off, to attend this committee hearing to show the respect. We spent morning, and also other neighbors, they've been trying to collect information and reaching out for, you know, our counselor for consultation as well. So I'm asking the committee member to put that on the file, that to us, it is so disrespectful. We just got told when we arrive at the venue today.
Would you like the item to be heard today, though?
I, you know what, since we have prepared for that, and I'm not too familiar with the process, I'm not too sure what does that mean to us? If we, if we let this application to be deferred, that means the whole group over there will be coming back again.
Yes. Now, the reason for the deferral request is that they would like to revise the drawings in response, I presume, perhaps, you know, in response to some of the feedback that was given. I heard the agent note, there were some comments from community planning, so staff have obviously have some comments on this. But I should also note that in addition to responding to feedback from staff, it also provides the applicant an opportunity to respond to some of the concerns from neighbors, and hopefully work through some of those before they come to us. You know, we try to get an application as far as, as far, you know, developed as possible before we hear it. So I wouldn't say it's a complete waste of time, but certainly, you know, to, I think, everybody's benefit, having an opportunity for further revision might be, might be in everybody's interest.
I understand. But is that, is that going to be going on the record? That, you know, it was like, it was quite disrespectful for our time, that, as I said, you know, we're all public, like, members.
Sure.
So we just want to take time to come in here to, you know, to, to take this opportunity to speak to the community, to the committee.
Yeah, so it is on record. Everything that we're saying right now is being recorded.
Yes.
It is part of the public record, is why I ask everybody to state their name and address before we, you know, provide any testimony. So it is on the record in that respect. And i- if you'd like to take it a step further, if the item comes back to us, you will have the opportunity to write in, to come down and speak in person, to speak online, and you can advise the committee that you were here at the previous hearing, and it was deferred, and update them on that process.
Thank you so much for the information. And I'm just going to ask my partner, Peter, like, you know, he will, he may want to make some comments as well.
Sure, so I would, I will hear from everybody, we'll get them all on the record, but I just remind everybody, we're only speaking to the deferral request for deferral.
I understand. I just think that, you know, he should have, like, a space to voice his opinion at the same time, even though I'm representing.
He does, he's coming down, we're going to get him on record.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Actually, before you step down, do we have any questions? Yes, Mr. Niffel?
Please go ahead.
Hi, could you tell me, are you speaking for, excuse me, you said you were speaking for a number of people, but are you speaking for Peter Zanakas? I'm pronouncing the name correctly.
Yeah, it's in the same group. May I please repeat the neighbors that, you know, I didn't get a chance to, like, tell you the numbers, the house number. I'm representing on Alfred Avenue, one eighty-six, one ninety-one, one ninety-two, one ninety-three, one ninety-four, one ninety-six, one ninety-seven. On Spring Garden, I'm representing house number three oh four as well. So I am speaking on behalf of a total of nine house owners today.
Okay.
I just wanted to comment that the letter that we have from one ninety-seven, it's a very long letter. It is extremely well crafted, and it makes, it makes a very good argument.
Yes, that's, that's from my, my neighbor, Peter. So that's why I was asking, Peter, would you like to come down to speak a couple of words before we?
We'll get him on the record. We'll get everybody on the record. I did have to ask, so you, you don't have, you don't have any issue if we, with the request for deferral? Is my understanding? I'm going to ask, I'll ask you, they'll have the opportunity to respond. Because you can say no, and...
And what does that mean? If we say no, what does that mean?
It means that you don't agree with the request for deferral. So when I take it into committee, they've only put in a request for deferral. If my colleagues feel that there's not a good reason to defer the application, we will hear it, we will deal with it today, and we will render a decision on it. Now, I will say, in my experience as chair, usually when a deferral request is made, it's usually the applicant in the driver's seat, right? It's their application, and if they want to revise it, for whatever reason, it's kind of hard to say no to that, right? Because generally speaking, when applicants defer, they usually come back to us with a better application, right? Or one reason or another, right?
I think we are looking for outcome, we are not, we are not looking, we are a group of people that we are not looking for confrontation.
Okay.
We are looking for having the right to enjoy our homes, and we're looking for the right to preserve the characteristic of our neighborhood.
Fair enough.
If that's what the committee think that the outcome is going to be like that, I am just going to look at my neighbors to see if there's any objection with deferring this one, meaning that we'll be coming back again. Are we all okay with that? Okay? All right, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Peter, are you sure that you, yeah?
Okay, so just for the record, staff, we have one speaker. I don't know, I'll speak to everybody. If anybody would like to come down, put their name and address on the record, you're more than welcome to. But otherwise, I, I think we might be okay to proceed with, with addressing the request for deferral at this time. That's all that it is, is a request for deferral. Okay, and as part of that, I will ask the agent if they would be open in addition to having some discussions with city staff, also to have some discussions with the neighbor, and, and see if we could make some, some headway, some progress on that before it comes back to us.
That would be great.
Okay, thank you.
As I mentioned, we are not a group of confrontational people. We're just looking for some compromising in here.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right. All right, staff is, oh, we do, we're going to have one more speaker. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Peter Zanatakas. I live at one ninety-seven Alfred Avenue. So thank you for the opportunity to address the deferral request. It is a surprise to us, it's last minute. We're not, I'm certainly not familiar with the, the particular items that are initiating the deferral request, what exactly is about to change, because the agent of record has not provided us any information about that. One of the things that, so I did sign my, my name onto the broader letter, but I also put in a submission of my own, because I have particular concerns, not only about the, the variances that were provided, but also in the manner in which this application has been brought forward. And so while, you know, there is a deferral request being made right now, you know, I, I'm of the view that this committee should hear some of the arguments around the, the approach that this particular homeowner has taken in bringing forward this application for variances, notwithstanding the particular variances that the agent is suggesting might change. So it's broader than just variances, it's the way in which this whole application is brought forward, which is what I was actually here to speak about, in addition to the variances. So I don't know if that changes your, your perspective as to whether this should be heard right now, or whether it should be deferred.
Perhaps a clarifying question, is there any, are you, are you, are you kind of alleging that there was sort of a, the process was not followed in this case with the agent? Would you say the way that the applicant, the application was brought forward, is there a problem with the, the service of the application, whether it be the notice or the sign? Or are you, are you just speaking more about perhaps a lack of communication between yourselves and the agent?
No, I'm, I'm here actually to speak about the fact that the homeowner has cut down a series of hundred-year-old trees in order to make room for the application in which he's put in the variances for.
Okay.
So with, without that, without that, I, I'm of the view, and my neighbors are of the view, that these particular variances wouldn't have been brought forward if that didn't occur.
Right, okay, so I'll stop you there. I know where you're going with this. Yes, that testimony is important, I think that is an important part of the application, but that's not going to be any help for you today, because we're only going to decide whether or not to defer it. When the application is eventually heard, should they come back, I suspect we'll probably have at least an hour on this, given the number of people and presentation, right, and there's going to be lots of time for all of that discussion to unfold. I would say, in the meantime, if there are certain things that have been done that you believe are not in accordance with the city's bylaws or standards, outside of the Committee of Adjustment, you know, there are, there are, there's recourse, right? You can, you can put in a call to three-on-one, you can speak with urban forestry, and that may, may or may not help your, your case, you know, coming forward. Staff will obviously provide us as much information as, as they feel fit, so if there's something that you feel might be an oversight, perhaps taking the time to investigate, collect information, speak with staff about it, it might be in everybody's interest, so that when we do hear the item, we have a fuller picture of, of what's going on.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I don't know what's shared in advance of hearings, but a lot of that has been outlined in my twelve-page letter with exhibits, as well as my communications with urban forestry. A file had, had been opened up in terms of the issues related to, first and foremost, the tree, only then to find out that these variances. I was well aware that the, the homeowner was going to knock down, because they had put fences around, you know, the, the temporary fences, but I only received, of course, as my neighbors did, the, the notice of variances. But once those came out, that's where I got really concerned as to what the process was that, or the mindset going through the homeowner in terms of his ability to move forward with such significant variances, given, given the issues related to the tree removals in the backyard.
Yeah, just, staff, can we just confirm that we have Mr. Zanatakas's letter of opposition on file? I just see the, is that, that's it there?
That's it, yeah.
All right, fantastic. And I'll also note, my colleague pointed out to me that forestry, forestry is not only reviewed the file, but they've, they've actually commented on it as well. I think they're also in support of a deferral at this time, so that everybody can get their ducks in a row, and maybe we can make a little bit of headway on this. All right?
Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you. Anybody else that's come down today like to be on the record? Or we'll wait until this item comes back, presume? Okay. Staff, do we have anybody online? No, okay, let's go back to the agent.
Yes.
Sir, so just speaking specifically to the deferral request, it, it seems that that is, might be the best path forward. You've had the opportunity to hear some of the concerns from neighbors, so I hope that if the deferral request is granted, you might take that opportunity to maybe reach out to them and facilitate some discussion? Is that possible? Okay, in, in addition to staff, the request from staff as well, community planning and forestry.
Yeah, I'm going to change the drawings based on the staff report, and also reach to the neighbors and talk, explain to them in person.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go into committee. Mr. Niffel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move deferral of the application to allow the applicant the opportunity to negotiate further with planning, forestry, and with the adjacent residents.
All right, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Mr. Majari, all in favor? That is unanimous, that deferral request is granted.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more deferral request this, in this slot. Item number seventeen, ninety-two Gordon Road. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing an extended and covered porch. Variances for building length, front yard setback, front yard landscaping, front yard soft landscaping, and rear yard soft landscaping. On file, material from the applicant, report from community planning, and a memo from urban forestry. We have our agent or applicant with us.
Yes, you do, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good, it's Monica Kuhn, I'm the architect and agent for the owners, and my address is twelve Sackville Place, Toronto.
All right. And the reason for your deferral request?
Well, it's actually that there was a mistake or a miss, an omission in the actual notice. Item number, variance number three, the percentage of landscaping was missed, the number. So they've got to send out a new notice to the neighbors, and we're back on the agenda for the twenty-fifth of September.
All right. Take this into committee for decision. Just confirming, we don't have anyone else to speak to this item, and nothing on... We'll take this into committee for decision. Just confirming, we don't have anyone else to speak to this item and nothing online. All right. Mr. Bartolo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I'll put forward a motion to defer this application to allow the variances to be updated and circulated properly.
All right, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? All right, the deferral request is granted.
Thank you very much.
All right. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, do we want to deal with the deferral request for the 4:00 PM slot now or later?
Through you, Mr. Chair, via the 4:00 o'clock time slot.
Okay. Okay. First item on our 2:00 PM session here that we're going to deal with today after deferrals is number, item number 10, 287 Ponce Avenue. Purpose of the application is to construct a two-story duplex. This application was deferred on January 15th of this year. Variances before us for side main mall height, main pedestrian entrance height, east side yard setback and west side yard setback. On file, material from the applicant, as well as previous agenda material, and we have a late report from community planning. Staff, we pull up our community planning report. We have our agent with us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Tranco Romano, Action Planning 321 Lake Shore. Good afternoon.
Welcome back, Mr. Romano. Can you confirm, I'm also seeing on my speakers list, Mr. Tran. Is he with you, is he part of your party?
He is part of the party, yes.
Okay.
So he's not, he's not going to be speaking.
All right. Anybody here to speak to this item? No, and staff, we don't have anybody else online. Just Mr. Romano. All right. I'm gonna ask my colleagues whether they'd like a presentation or they have questions? No? All right. I have one question. Mr. Romano, if we can just pull up the presentation material and go to the side elevations.
That would be my cover letter, I think you're referring to.
Is it the cover letter? Yeah, actually, thank you for that.
So I think that's the page number five of the, page five and six of that cover letter.
Yeah, just a little slow today with our computers, so just bear with us. I'm gonna pull up. Unless staff can get it before me.
One more.
You were, you were right. It is in your cover letter. All right. I'd actually gone to the presentation material from the previous package, but you're right, it's part of the cover letter. Mr. Romano, just a clarifying question. So I note that you made reference to an 8.64 meter height, which is, responds to the variance for the side yard setback. Does that not, does that 8.64 meter not also apply to the portion on the, towards the front main wall of the house labeled brick veneer?
Yes, thank you for that question, Mr. Chairman. I asked the same thing of the zoning examiner and they did not count that on that front portion. It's just for the, for the window portion that I've highlighted on both sides.
Any reason why they may or may not have, I'm just trying to just wrap my head around it myself, because I'm looking at side main wall. I'm trying to understand.
Nope, they did not provide a reason for it. I asked just to confirm the location of it and they confirmed the location of it as being the part that I've highlighted in the, on both side elevations.
Okay, very well. That's the only question I had. I'll ask my colleagues if they have more questions. All right. Oh, Mr. Niffel.
Mr. Romano, do you have any concern with screening the west side of the rear deck? It's elevated and it creates a privacy problem as far as I can see from the drawings.
Thank you for that question. I have no difficulty in having a 1.5 meter privacy screen from the floor of the deck.
Okay.
You're welcome.
All right. If there's no other questions, Mr. Romano, happy to take this into committee.
Very good. Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's move into committee now. Mr. Kaboo.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Through you, I think I've reviewed this application. The applicant has made many changes and resolved some of the issues with the staff. And so I think the application made the four tests and I'm more than willing to put forward a motion for us to approve it subject to the, to the, to the scanning, private scanning and then the staff report conditions.
All right.
So the planning report comes substantially in accordance with the revised site plan.
All right, so staff, we've got community planning recommendations in addition to privacy screening, to confirm 1.5 meters from, on the west side. Yeah. I have a seconder for Mr. Kaboo, Mr. Bartolo, all in favor, unanimous. That application is approved.
Thank you and enjoy the rest of your day.
You as well. All right. Item number 11. 283 Glen Cairn Avenue. Purpose of the application is to construct a new detached dwelling with an integral three-car garage in the basement and one on the main floor with a car lift, front porch, rear second-story balcony, third-story side balcony and a rear yard cabana and swimming pool. Variances include side yard setback for a rear platform, main wall heights, east side yard setback, west side yard setback, number of platforms on a rear main wall, platform encroachment into a west side yard setback, FSI, building length, building depth and parking space width. On file, material from the applicant, communication from transportation and community planning. We have our agent with us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. David Bronskill, 333 Bay Street, Suite 3400 in Toronto. Here is agent for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Bronskill. Staff, we have another speaker online as well. All right, Mr. Ross, I believe. Okay. Mr. Bronskill, ask for a presentation from you. We'll get the five minutes up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can go through a presentation. I did look at the AIC and didn't see any written opposition, so I will, I will have to reserve any comments in response to Mr. Ross, because I'm, or Ms. Ross, because I'm not sure of the nature of their concerns, to be honest.
Sure, Mr. Bronskill, if it's a benefit to, we can, we can have a more focused, I guess, we can focus this a little bit more through questioning as well, so just be mindful of that. All right?
I will. Thank you, sir. That's helpful. And because, Mr. Chair, I was gonna lead with the fact that you do have a transportation report in front of you that has acknowledged the transportation variance, has indicated no objections and is not seeking any conditions, but did provide advisory comments. I would also note for the panel, what I'm gonna submit to you is frankly a rare but helpful occurrence, that there's also a report from city planning in front of you. And that report, Mr. Chair, does two things. It does recommend a condition of approval and that would ensure that certain variances, although I would be happy if that was even broadly to, maybe a bit more standard, that would say the development should be substantially in accordance with the site plan, front, rear, west, east elevations. Planning staff have linked it to specific variances, but I have no concern if it would apply to the building as a whole. But the second thing about that staff report that I would just, I would just flag for the committee is it is, it is frankly specific. It does indicate planning staff's specific support. It does offer planning staff's opinion that the proposal meets the four tests. It meets the intents of the OP and the zoning bylaw is minor in nature and should be considered an appropriate development of the land. And it reviews specific variances, including the main wall heights, the side yard setbacks and length and depth as part of giving that recommendation to you. And I just submit again to the committee, we do sometimes see these staff reports recommending the conditions, but the reports themselves, I'm gonna suggest, are often a bit more agnostic and don't have this level of detail and as specific a recommendation. It is a three-story proposal on Glen Cairn. Our presentation, Mr. Chair, does have some of the usual materials we like to have in front of you, a site plan showing both the existing and the as-of-right envelope and how the proposal compares to it. It also has, if staff, just in the interest of time, might flip to page four, an important diagram that we've included for you that shows how the upper levels of the building and in particular the second and third floors stepped back with the second floor depth being 21.02 meters and the third floor depth being within that roof line, 18.71 meters, such that the length and depth variances and I think why planning staff are recommending the condition really apply for two reasons. There's a first-story addition on the back and there's a little bit of an underground excavation at the front that is picked up as well. We've included maps that show the numeric variances approved in respective densities and length and depth, just to give you a sense that there is development of this nature occurring in the area. And the last thing I would just flag for the committee on the last two pages of the presentation, it is a design with a sloped roof on it, but given the nature of the slope and the extent of the resulting roof, it is being interpreted as a flat roof by the zoning examiner, although I would suggest from the rendering, it does look and feel like a sloped roof. There is no variance for overall height, but because it's interpreted as a flat roof, the 10.97 meters is being measured to the top of the flat roof. If staff are able to quickly go to page eight of that PDF, just on the screen for the committee and for anyone who may be looking at home. We've, we've put the permitted, thank you, that's page five. That'd be six, just a little bit more if you don't mind. Oops, it may be, it may be lagging. So, Mr. Chair, I'll just finish, in the interest of time. We've shown the red permitted wall height, which would typically be the eaves height, and the eaves is actually at 7.62 meters, which is below the permitted wall height of 8.5. So it's really the fact that the flat roof despite the slopes, there it is, thank you, despite the slopes on all sides, it's being interpreted as a flat roof just because of the nature of the slopes. We think because there's no overall permitted roof height, that this is not an overwhelming appearance from anyone from the street. And that, and, Mr. Chair, I'll just end it there, just rely on the staff report and listen to what the concerns may be of the one speaker.
All right, very good. Thank you. Questions? All right, let's get our other speaker online.
Ross, and I live at 287 Glen Cairn Avenue. First of all, I'm sorry, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you well.
Great, good. So I, first of all, want to congratulate the architect and the proponent for the building. It looks like a beautiful home. And my concern, I live two doors down from this, and I must tell you that about three or four years ago, we did an extensive renovation to our house to deal with drainage problems, because we've had water in our basement several times over the years. So we ended up building a French drain in the back of the yard, and it's a very deep yard, and also drainage work around the house as well. So the problems that we've had over the years is that as new homes are built, the surface areas becomes much larger and as a consequence of that, more and more water tends to go towards our yard. We have pools on all the houses surrounding us and this is becoming the norm nowadays. There's gonna be a pool in this house as well, of course. So when we did our renovation, we replaced our asphalt driveway with a driveway which is permeable, so it allows water to get into the ground. Now, the feature of this neighborhood is that the ground is really very dense, hard clay. It's solid clay, so really it's very difficult for the water to seep into the ground. And my concerns are that the, the, the envelope of this building is so large and undoubtedly they're gonna have a heated driveway as well, which adds to the water load in the neighborhood, that I don't think there's enough absorptive capacity in the remaining ground here to deal with the water. And we know that with climate change, we're getting much more frequent heavy downpours and that's putting a stress on the systems for the City of Toronto as well as the neighbors. And that is basically my main objection, that the footprint of the building. And when they say the, what I see as requested is minor variances, look more like major variances to me. Talking about the permitted floor space, the building length not being 17 meters permitted, but close to 31 meters. And the depth of the building, again, not being, the law requires 19 meters and they're asking for 25.7. So I'm just concerned about the size of the building and the impact of this structure having on groundwater in the neighborhood. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Questions?
I would be interested if they're gonna make any provisions for increasing the absorptive capacity, such as construction of the driveway, the green space around the home, the maintenance of the trees in the yard, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, fair enough, fair enough. I will, I'm gonna give the agent an opportunity to specifically respond to that. All right, thanks. Let's go back to our agent, Mr. Bronskill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, Mr. Chair, I would just like to thank Mr. Ross for coming and I will certainly relay his experiences both to the architect and to the client. As the committee knows well, one of the things that our client will have to do for any structure on the house, whether as-of-right or not, is work with the buildings department, lawn grading, drainage and be responsible to ensure that drainage is contained on their site. Those comments, however, about soils and their experience, I am gonna pass along. This architect has worked with other clients with a very good engineer, who I've worked with as well, about drainage matters, and I think we will probably engage them. I would simply note on the colored site plan on page two and as part of the variances, there is a, there is a good amount of green space. There's no variances here being sought for soft landscaping. The driveway width only takes up, you know, the allotted portion of that front yard and there still is frankly significant green space in both the front side and rears. The plans are not currently showing permeable paving. I mean, if that was something that the committee ultimately wanted to impose as a condition, as I have previously with this panel, I wouldn't be opposing such a condition. If someone wanted to oppose that as part of a motion to approve, I understand why it's being requested by Mr. Ross and it's something that can certainly be implemented. As this panel well knows, the materiality for permeable paving has improved so significantly in recent years that it can easily be done without impacting any operations of that driveway and still having a high aesthetic quality. So I do appreciate all of his comments. We will relay them back. We would be accepting of such a condition. And I would, again, just simply note from the committee, the amount of soft landscaping that's still there and our obligations in terms of permitting to ensure that we are not exporting requirements on any external neighbors.
All right. Okay, questions? All right, no questions. Oh, Mr. Margari.
A quick question. I'm looking at your presentation and the colored site plan. The dash red line is representing the as-of-law for, for the building extent. I want to-
Yes.
Oh, okay. So that building length, seventeen meters, at the lower, at the, at the south side of the drawing, so that's, that's where is actually the seventeen meters, right?
Correct. That, that's the as-of-right on that, on that diagram, the seventeen meters with the permitted extension. And then through you, Mr. Chair, you, you can then sort of see how the, it staggers back. Most, most, I won't say all, most of the extension beyond that red line is, I'm going to call it the cross hatching, or that first floor, which is a family room that then turns to face the outdoor room. You then have a diagonal hatching, which is the second floor, which does have some extension beyond the seventeen meters. As I indicated, it's just two centimeters over twenty-one meters for that second floor, so twenty-one point oh two. And then the third floor is a dotted or, or dimpled shading, if I can call it that, Mr. Chair. And it's got a full depth of eighteen point seven one meters, although it's quite narrow at a couple of points, just in terms of coming within the roof line. So it does stagger up so that frankly, the significant majority of the penetration is just that first story room, but there is some, there is some second story also and a little bit of third story going beyond it, through you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Other questions? All right. All right, let's take this into committee. Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I don't have any difficulty with this application. In fact, I'd like to commend the applicant for the, the pitched flat roof. Were this to be a true flat roof, I think this project would not be anywhere near as enticing nor as representative of the area. And I think that the appearance of a pitched roof adds great deal, plus the terracing of the floors, adds a great deal to its compatibility with the existing areas. I'd like to move, or I'd be prepared to move a motion of approval, subject to the planning condition, subject to the outdoor room remaining unenclosed, and I think as Mr. Bronskill had volunteered, permeable pavers on the driveway would be a good idea, and I would recommend that that be a condition as well.
All right, second by Mr. Margari. All in favor? All right, that is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, moving right along. We'll get Ms., Mr. Bartolo back. All right, item number twelve. One, two, three Ridley Boulevard. The purpose of the application is to construct two ancillary structures, cabana and pergola in the rear yard of the property, requires two variances, lot coverage and rear yard setback, on file material from the applicant, memo from Urban Forestry, form letters in support from one nineteen, one twenty-five, one twenty-sixth Ridley Boulevard, and one letter of objection with signatures from multiple area residents. As well, we have a late letter of support from number one twenty, Ridley Boulevard. Okay, we have our agent with us.
Yes, this is Jim Pfeffer from ninety-five St. Clair Avenue West in Toronto.
Welcome back, Mr. Pfeffer. All right, Mr. Pfeffer, we have some opposition on this file. There's some concerns that were raised. I'd like to give you an opportunity to provide a presentation for us. Get the five minutes up. But before we get going, I should ask, the portal has been down. Have you had the opportunity to?
Yes.
Yeah, you're up to date with the file?
I read this letter so I can speak to, I'll try and speak to all of the items on this letter.
Okay, I didn't want to catch you off guard with items that you weren't aware of, so I just, just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, and is anyone here to speak in opposition, do you know? Just, just so I know.
All right. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, if you could pull up the presentation we had. So the opening page of the presentation here, if you can just zoom out a little bit, these are the two structures that are involved. So it's a enclosed cabana and an open pergola. You can see the pergola is quite, in fact, quite open, so, but it counts for lot coverage nonetheless. So these are these two items which make up a very small lot coverage variance. And the setback variance is a setback to the rear yard from that cabana that you see on the right. The other thing that you'll see in the rendering is that there's a lot of side yard screening, and that is in fact the case, both in the existing case on the side yard lot line, and then the owner intends to do a lot of planting along the rear lot line. And that can be seen in this plan that you see here. So the location of the cabana, you can see highlighted in red, is that rear yard setback we're looking for. And that rear yard setback, you'll notice, you know, there's another cabana immediately behind it, which is set back just one meter from the property line. And you'll see that cabana in photos, and you'll see that that actually is going to block any view of this cabana. If you could just hold on to the site plan for one more minute. I know some neighbors have talked about the pool, so our office did not design the pool, and we're not involved in the construction of the pool, which is under a different permit. I'll speak to that with any questions if you'd like, but just to let you know, this is really just about the cabana and the pergola. So going down, you can see, this is an aerial view. You can see in this view, a number of cabanas which are on the lot lines. So the two properties to the left of ours, you can see two side yards cabanas, which are really like right at the side property lines. And then you can see where our cabana is in that plan, and you can see that neighboring cabana immediately below that. In the corner of that lot, you can see there's two lots behind ours. And then actually, in this photo towards the bottom right, you can see another cabana, which is basically kind of pushed into the corner. So, you know, moving the cabana into the rear corner, and ours is over a meter from the lot line, so there's enough space to get a hedge and adequate, adequate separation from the adjacent properties. But that's a pretty common pattern in the neighborhood, and of course, that's done to kind of maximize the amenity space in the rear yard. So going down one more page, these are some photos of the existing condition in the yard. On the bottom right, you can see that there's actually a lot of existing screening on the property behind where this pergola and cabana is going to be, but as well as that, we intend to plant a hedge of columnar trees. And then looking immediately to the rear, there's a significant tree. Excavation for the pool has already taken place, and a report has been submitted to Urban Forestry on that excavation. Again, that's not our office. And I understand a number of the neighbors are upset because that rear property line had had a lot of mature, but not protected planting along that, and it was all cleared in preparation for new landscaping. But it's definitely the owner's intent, which he's, you know, sent to or communicated to the other neighbors, that it's definitely the intention to plant a new tall columnar hedge along that property line to create and preserve, you know, the privacy for all other people. Actually, if you want to go up to the site plan for one more minute, I'll just address one more thing that was spoken of, actually, the aerial view. The letter of objection also mentioned the fact that there was a prior application for this project. That's true, and it was for side yard setbacks, that one tiny rear balcony, the height, and the overall length of the building. But you can see the length, the side yard, all of that's pretty much in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. And the variances we're adding, we're asking for, for these ancillary structures do not contribute, they don't, they aren't cumulative in any way to the impact of what was granted over ten years ago for the existing property. So I'll happy to take any questions later.
Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In one of the letters, and perhaps you want to address it later, in one of the letters, the, the person says that there's a discrepancy that at one point, you've mentioned that the lot area is six hundred and twenty-six point five square meters, and in another area, it's six hundred and sixty-six point three square meters. Perhaps when that person speaks, you could clarify if there's a problem?
Well, I can clarify this now, if you like. Or just so that other person can, can speak to what I'm about to tell you, which is-
You know where it is on their letter, do you?
I do know where it is on the letter. So the, and they said, well, what is this, what's the impact on this for the variance? Number one, the percent, the lot coverage percentage variance was determined, you know, not just by our office, but there is a zoning notice. So we didn't do a waiver. There's a zoning notice that says the house plus the cabana equals this amount of lot coverage. And in the variance, if you take a look at it, you'll note that it doesn't just have the percentage, but it ju, it has an absolute number in square meters as well. So it's not like if suddenly the lot's bigger because someone made a typo, that we're going to be able to build a bigger structure. Know the absolute number in square meters as well as the percentages there. And I think perhaps in the letter, they, there was a mention at the same time, is there might have been a lot coverage for a deck which had been existing, but that deck which had been there has, has been removed. As you can see, the backyard is pretty open, so there's no additional lot coverage for any pre-existing ancillary construction in the, in the rear yard.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we have another speaker. Anybody come down in person for this item? Oh, all right. Who wants to come, who wants to speak first?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name's Michael Borland. I own the property at one zero eight Joyce Boulevard. My property immediately adjoins the applicant's property at the rear lot line. I'm strongly opposed to this application for a number of reasons. First of all, I think the application itself is deficient. There's two false statements in the application, and that's despite the sworn declaration of the architect on page five, that all statements in the application are true. The first false statement is at the bottom of page one of the application, where it says the property is not subject of any previous application. And as the architect has just mentioned, it is in fact, subject to a 2010 Committee of Adjustment application, the decision from which is in the supporting documents. And I'll come back to that in a minute or so. The second false statement is at the top of page two of the application, where it says that the property is not subject to the private tree bylaw. And this is incorrect, because as the architect has just mentioned, there's a giant red oak tree in the rear yard of that building with a hundred and five centimeter trunk diameter and a six point three meter tree protection area. That's my first point. Secondly, the applicant does not adequately address the question on page two of the application, as why it's not possible to construct these two ancillary buildings so that they comply with the existing bylaws. He's basically, basically saying it's keeping up with the neighborhood, but no evidence of any kind has been provided. Now, if the required rear yard setback for the cabana is half of its height, then why can't the height of the cabana be reduced? So it does comply with the rear yard setback. Why can't the cabana be built further from the rear yacht line, a rear yard line, so that it does comply with the bylaw? And why do the proposed structures have to be so large that they don't comply with the lot area coverage bylaw? All of these questions go unanswered. My third point is that the Arborist report that's been submitted in support of this application is incomplete and deficient. It's merely a statement of an inventory of the trees that exist on the property. It specifically disclaims any impact analysis from building these two ancillary structures on the lot. And given that there's a bylaw-protected tree on the lot, that's a critical component, and it's missing. My fourth objection is that the tree protection bylaw declaration also contains a false statement. It says on page three that the proposed construction activity will not occur within the tree protection zone of any bylaw-protected tree. And this is incorrect, because as you'll see from the site plan, the southwest portion of the proposed cabana is within the tree protection zone perimeter of that large oak tree situated on the back lot. It's more evident in the scale at one to a hundred, rather than the one to two hundred plan, site plan. My fifth objection is that since a portion of the proposed cabana is located within the tree protection zone of the red oak tree, a permit from Urban Forestry Services is required. No permit has been filed, and it's illegal to construct the cabana in this location without a permit. My sixth objection is that prior to getting the Arborist's tree inventory report, the owner cut down all of the foliage along the rear lot line, including three trees that could possibly have been bylaw-protected. And those trees and the foliage that was cut down are shown in the five photos, which were schedules to the statement of objection that was filed on August twenty-first. So Urban Forestry has been requested to investigate whether or not permits were required for the removal of those trees. We haven't heard back from the results of that investigation. My seventh point is that the 2010 Committee of Adjustment decision has already granted a three point six percent bylaw variance for lot coverage. So this is really a second bite at the apple, because the applicant is requesting a three point seven percent variance now for lot coverage, for a combined impact of seven point three percent, which I submit is not in fact minor. I'm pressed for time, I have three more points, I'll hurry. Based on the proposed height of the cabana, the required minimum rear yard setback is one point seven eight meters. They're proposing that it be set back only one point one meters. That's a thirty-eight percent variance from the bylaw. So I would encourage the committee not to consider thirty-eight percent to be minor. My second last point is that the site plan shows an in-ground pool and hot tub located well within the tree protection zone for the oak tree in the rear yard. Nevertheless, excavation for that pool and hot tub took place in the middle of August, two weeks ago. An inspector from Urban Forestry Services was called to the site and immediately issued a stop-work order and the removal of all construction equipment from the site. Apparently, no permit from Urban Forestry Services had been obtained to allow construction within the tree protection zone. This also is illegal. And finally, you'll see from the plans that the cabana floor plan shows an area immediately to the east of the cabana marked "pool equipment." This area does not appear to be enclosed at all or have any access point. So I believe that any space where pool equip- So I believe that any space where pool equipment is to be located, such as a pool pump, should be fully enclosed so that it's not visible to neighbors and it's no noise that the neighbors have to endure. And that's the basis of my objection. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, some questions for you. The, I believe the agent noted that there was another cabana on adjacent property. If I'm not mistaken, that is your property?
Yes, we have a cabana.
You have a cabana?
In the rear yard.
Um, maybe you can provide a little bit, I, I'm curious to know just by, through adjacency, what's being proposed versus what is existing on the other side of the fence. Would you happen to know, uh, you know, what the height of that cabana is?
I, I believe it's approximately 10 and a half feet.
10 and a half feet?
So a good foot and a half shorter than what's being proposed in the adjacent lot. That was built 21 years ago, so I tried to find the files and it was a bit, I didn't have all the information.
Okay. And what, what the purpose of that cabana, that, does that also house pool equipment inside or?
The pool equipment is inside, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Deborah Affleck, and I am the co-owner of 1110 Joyce Boulevard, along with my husband.
Uh, Ms. Affleck, are you, just to confirm, I have two speakers from 110. Are you gonna be speaking?
I'm speaking on behalf of both of us.
Perfect. All right.
Thank you. So our home is located directly behind the applicant's property, and we will be significantly impacted by the proposed minor variance. I'm also speaking today not only on my own behalf, but on behalf of the 19 neighbors from 13 different properties who've signed a statement opposing this application. It's worth noting that this number might have been much higher, but many immediate neighbors were currently away due to the late, the timing in late August and their normal holiday time. We, along with Mr. Borland, who just spoke, share some serious concerns about this application as outlined in our formal letter of objection. This is not a minor variance. As Mr. Borland explains, it represents a substantial departure from existing zoning bylaws, the bylaws that I believe exist to protect property owners and to preserve the character of our neighborhood. The applicant's lot coverage has already been increased, and there is no demonstrated need to build taller structures or move them closer to neighboring property lines. The proposed changes would reduce green space, increase noise, particularly from pool equipment, pumps, washroom facilities that are proposed within these structures. Since the initial paperwork for this application was filed in May of this year, the applicant has repeatedly disregarded city bylaws. On June 22nd and 23rd, the applicant removed all property line foliage, including several potentially bylaw protected trees and their stumps, presumably without a permit. This occurred just days before he obtained an arborist report on July 5th, which would have identified and measured those trees to determine whether they were in need of protection. The photographs of the removed trees are included in schedules A through E of our opposition statement. The arborist report also fails to mention the required tree protection zone and the required size of that zone, despite the presence of the mature red oak tree with a trunk diameter of 105 centimeters. Then on August 18th, construction began in the backyard without proper authorization. A large hole was dug very quickly, exposing five major roots of the red oak tree. Urban forestry officials halted the work within hours, and no further construction has been permitted since. On August 22nd, the applicant and his partner visited my home. He claimed he had removed the trees and foliage along the property line because they were dead. This is simply not true. The photographs clearly show healthy trees of significant stature. The removal of these mature trees has eliminated all privacy between our properties. Even if new trees are planted, as the architect was suggesting, or hedges, whatever they may be, they will be significantly shorter and provide only limited screening at ground level. The original trees that were there for the four and a half years I've lived at this address offered full privacy from all floors. Additionally, any new plantings could potentially struggle to survive due to lack of sunlight, especially if the proposed 12-foot cabana is placed so close to the rear lot line. It is important to note that the applicant has only responded to objections from neighbors, Urban Forestry, and others after the fact, after they were raised. Prior to our formal opposition filing the morning of August 21st, he had not engaged with the community or any neighbors, nor complied with the bylaws regarding tree removal or protection. We, the 19 neighbors I represent, strongly oppose this application. It's not for, an application for a minor variance. It does not benefit the community or enhance the neighborhood. Instead, it reduces green space, threatens a protected tree, and compromises the peaceful enjoyment of our properties. The proposed structures are larger, taller, and positioned closer to our homes, not to the applicant's home. We ask, why should the bylaws be amended for this? What is the purpose? What public good does this serve? We respectfully urge the committee to reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, staff, any other speakers online?
Um, I don't believe so, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Let's go back to Mr. Pfeffer.
Yeah, if you can keep this, uh, letter of, uh, objection up for one minute and just go to the last page. And while you're getting there, I will point out that there were 12 addresses on the letter of objection, and both 119 and 128 who are there also subsequently submitted letters of support. So if you can just go down to the last page, and I don't know if you want to look for those letters of support, but, um, so we do have letters of support from quite a number of neighbors, including both neighbors immediately adjacent to, uh, immediately on either side of this property. And, you know, 128, a number of neighbors on, uh, on really, oh yeah, uh, there's 111, 130. Yeah, so going down to the last page of this letter, oh, sorry, of the letter of objection. So the last page of the letter of objection has a photo of Mr. Borland's backyard at 108 Joyce. And the very last page, the very last page, please. So that, that is a photo of his cabana. Now, I, I don't know how that tall that cabana is, but those look like basically six-inch boards. There's, uh, 17 of them going up to the eve, which would put it at eight foot six to the eve. You know, it certainly seems like it's pretty close to 12 feet. And that cabana is one meter from the property line, so it's closer than what we're proposing, and it completely obscures any kind of view that he would have, um, of our rear yard. And it's also very much in keeping with what we're proposing. I think if you pull up our application, I'd just like to speak to some of these, these tree issues. In our site plan, you can see that the surveyor had actually identified that large red oak as, I believe, 65 centimeters. And in fact, it's about 105 is identified by our arborist, if you can pull up our site plan. So I think when we did the initial application, and when the landscape architect, who was not involved, or was engaged separately from the owner, took the, did the initial application on the sort of impact of the tree, um, there was, I guess, some initial confusion or misunderstanding about what the actual tree protection zone would be. But we did submit a fully compliant arborist report to the Committee of Adjustment. As, as you know, we don't have to submit a impact report to the committee, and generally our office does these impact reports after approval, because after approval, we actually know that we're gonna proceed to, what we're going to proceed to build, and Urban Forestry will not process, in my experience, an application to injure a tree while there's an open application in front of the Committee of Adjustment. They want a final and binding before they start to process a prior application. Both prior speakers mentioned that we had a prior lot coverage variance. I don't see that in that, um, prior committee decision that you see, uh, it's on the file. And you can see what we're looking for. It's 35% that's permitted, 36% that's allowed. There was no prior application or approval for lot coverage. So that was absolutely not true, and this variance is not cumulative with any other lot coverage variances. There you can see in red, the line of that tree protection zone, you can see there's a very small sliver of the cabana which cuts into that tree protection zone. It's only the cabana and the pergola that's in front of you today. I know the excavation for the pool has taken place, and a report on that excavation has been submitted to Urban Forestry. Urban Forestry submitted a report to the committee. So notwithstanding any kind of confusion about the tree protection zone, Urban Forestry was circulated on this application, they did ask the Committee of Adjustment to make any approvals subject to an application to Urban Forestry, and we will submit an application to Urban Forestry. And I guess that's the kind of final point I'd like to make here, is that the owner here has done everything right. You know, they were doing some rear yard landscaping, they came to us as an architect. As an architect, we said, you're going to need to get a permit for this building because it has plumbing in it, and because of the size of it, you're going to have to do a zoning review. They did that. You're gonna have to go to committee. We're here to ask for the permission for these very small variances, just for these two ancillary structures. And when it's all done, we're gonna go through the building permit and inspection process to make sure that all of this is being done properly. And by giving us approval here today, you can ensure that it's all being done properly. In terms of the pool equipment, I just say, modern pool equipment, very quiet, and there's no variance in front of you for that pool equipment. So, yeah, I'm really happy to take any other questions.
All right.
And I hope that answered all of the concerns.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions? Yes, Mr. Niffield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As one of the, um, one of your neighbors asked, what is, and I agree, we need an answer, why can you not comply with the bylaw relative to setback for the cabana? It seems to be somewhat arbitrary where the cabana is placed. If you were to comply with the bylaw, it would shift, but it wouldn't, it doesn't look like it would be a hardship. So what was, why, what is the reason for that variance? And secondly, the, the point that was made about pool equipment, again, it most often is inside a building. Why is it not included in your cabana?
I mean, it certainly could be included in the cabana, but in my experience, it's often outdoors as well. Uh, there could certainly be acoustic screening around that, and I know, happy to coordinate with, you know, and often, as an architect, we've done exterior pool, pool equipment, often because if there's a heater, it needs to get vented. Modern pool equipment is very, very quiet. But we're certainly happy to work with the neighbors on any kind of disturbance that pool equipment might propose, might, might impose. The second, just in terms of why it is where it is, I mean, if you take a look at the site plan, that pergola is centered on the pool. Uh, it's connected to the cabana with a bit of a trellis, as you can see, and then where the cabana entrance is, it's, you know, the two doors are open in front of some open space, um, so it just makes it kind of a, you know, from the, you know, sort of garden planning and entry point of view, kind of more attractive. This is absolutely in keeping with the prevalent patterns of open space in the neighborhood, and you can see a couple of those in the aerial photograph. You can see both the neighbor 108 has their cabana in the corner, but you can also, on the same aerial photograph, which encompasses, I think, about eight houses, you can see another cabana, which is positioned in the rear side corner of the property line. And here, unless I'm mistaken, there's also, you know, a structure, uh, over the other side property line. This would be, uh, so it's, you know, it's basically just in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and it allows for more open space in the open amenity area of the backyard. So could we shift it? Absolutely. Are we in keeping with the established pattern of open space in the neighborhood? Absolutely.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Pfeffer. Let's take this into committee now. Who would like to get us started? I, maybe, I'll just provide a brief comment on this one. It's interesting, because I, I hear what the agent's saying with respect to the fact that there's another, um, you know, a similar structure in the adjacent property. The, the challenge that I have with this is the rear yard setback, you know, you look at it, everything on site plan seems to be in keeping, but when you look at the variance itself for that rear yard setback, it, the number that, uh, the required number is actually a product of what the proposed height is, is half of the proposed height, which in this case is 1.78 meters, half of 3.55. My concern with this was not necessarily the lot coverage or the rear yard setback, but the height of this cabana structure at 12 feet, and how that would, you know, a typical fence in, in the city is about seven, maybe eight feet, so you think 12 feet, four feet's a lot over the top of a fence. You know, and then, you know, of course, comes to me and says, well, they're not, they don't have a height variance, but, but, but they do, because the rear, if the rear yard setback is a, is a product of half of the height, right? It's the height that's not making them comply with the rear yard setback. Does that make, does that make sense? So it, it's, and I, I question too, you know, really, you look at the structure at 12 feet, I mean, you could have finished ceiling height in that bathroom on that tiny structure of like 10 or 11 feet. And I think that's, that's really where I think the applicant, I think, fell short, at least for me, in terms of, uh, support of that rear yard setback. You know, it may be, may be appropriate on the open section further in the yard, but when you're, you're pushing it that far towards the rear fence, it becomes a problem once you start to go up above, you know, 10, 11, 12 feet. And I don't, you know, we're looking at photos, but, uh, you know, based off the photo of the existing, uh, pool structure, uh, to me, that, that side main wall doesn't look to be any higher than eight feet. And here, I'm looking at eight feet plus another two foot entablature. I don't know whether it's part of the side main wall, it's just decorated as part of the roof, but then the roof on top of that, you're, you're over 12 feet. So this is kind, that's really where I struggle with it in terms of the massing. I think the structures are fine, but the, the other thing is that these lots, you know, in comparison to the last file that we had on Glen Cairn, I mean, they're, they're fairly average lots. They're not, they don't have excessive depth, uh, and therefore, the impact of these, you know, tall structures in the backyard, they're gonna be more impactful than, you know, if somebody had an extra 50 or 40 or 50 feet of backyard space where these structures would sit. So I, it, it's a tough one. But I, I think like for me, it, that, the, the massing of that, the 12-foot roof height is, is problematic, um, specific to the relation, specific to that rear yard setback, which is, the requirement is based off of the height that they're proposing. Mr. Niffield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I- I'd like, there are some things about the application I quite like. I, I think the pergola and cabana being linked and their form and so forth, they're all, they're very handsome.
Yeah.
I'm not convinced that there is an urgent need for this cabana to be in this location. And therefore, there is, in my view, no need for the variance about the rear yard setback. Particularly when the trees that would have provided privacy have all been taken down. In the same way, I am concerned with the pool equipment being outside, as one of the neighbors mentioned. And then the applicant said, oh, but it'd be screened. Well, if it was going to be screened, there should be a concrete proposal here to screen it, and there isn't. There's a drawing that doesn't show anything in the way of screening. And I'm really uncomfortable with a condition that just says, screen it. Because I'm not, I'm not confident that it would be dealt with in a proper way. So I'm, I'm not going to be supporting variance number two, the location of the cabana. I just don't think that in this case, the variance is necessary. I don't believe the bylaw needs to be amended. The issue with the tree sounds quite serious. It impacts the pool, which is not before us, and the cabana, which is before us. So I, the only portion of this application that I'd be prepared to support would be variance number one.
Yeah, I, I might also note too, if, if they keep everything in place and they just drop the height of the roof on that, the rear portion of that structure, then they may even come into compliance with the rear yard setback. They may not need the variance and they may be able to actually build this as close as they want to, to the fence. I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but it's, it's the, it's the height that is triggering the requirement for additional rear yard setbacks. So it's like, which do you want? Yeah.
They have to comply.
Yeah.
I just don't see the need for variance.
Yeah. But, but, but to your point, I mean, otherwise, a pretty, pretty good application in terms of, you know, the, the kind of sequencing, the open pergola with the landscape space underneath. I think it's supportable in that respect. But it's, I, I do hear the neighbors' concerns with respect to that additional bit of massing. And I, I do believe that this, what's proposed, in terms of a massing, is, is larger than what is on the other side of the fence. I don't think they're like for like. But it's, but I, but it, it is, it is hard to tell. I haven't had any evidence certainly to suggest that they are. I don't know. Colleagues feel if, other comments? Bartolo, maybe you?
No, I, I agree with-
It's a close call.
I, I agree with Mr. Ninfeld. I mean, I think they can pick up the sixty-eight centimeters that are required there, either by lowering the height or just moving things over. It seems like there's adequate space for this. I'm willing to kind of go along with the additional lot coverage and let them sort out a way of complying so that we eliminate variance number two.
A motion, maybe, see where it goes?
I didn't hear all of what you said. Are you supporting variance one?
I think he's-
Yes.
He agrees.
Okay. Then I'd, I'd like to move approval of variance number one, but refusal of variance number two. For the reasons mentioned, I don't believe that it clearly meets the four tests. And I don't see the reason for the second variance. There are a number of alternatives for the applicant to comply with the, with the bylaw that I don't think are, are a hardship. And my motion is subject to forestry condition number two.
All right. Do I have a seconder? Mr. Bartolo, all in favor? That's unanimous. That application is approved in part with condition.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Staff, committee members, how are we doing? Do we need a relief break or are we okay to keep moving? Five minutes? Let's take five. Okay. Three thirty-seven, we'll resume. Let's three forty-three.
What I'm here for, three, three thirty-two Brighton.
Brighton?
Yeah, Brighton. After four o'clock.
Yes, okay. Um, are you or Olivia or?
I'm the agent.
Okay.
I'm Mr. Crane.
Okay, you're on here.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So you're here personally, right? So you have a, a-
I'm just wondering whether you got some of those signatures. I got some letters, what's your name, maybe?
So, um, we wanted something to date?
Yeah.
We weren't able to, um, because everything is, um, has to be, um, spoken digitally, uh, required for the hearing. So we aren't able to accept anything on the floor.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, so not any, um, support, um, 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 I think so. So it's all on the notice, um, that goes out, um, so.
What? Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand. I understand.
So nothing can be handed over strictly because it's a, it's a hybrid period as well. Um, again, there is a participant online, you're unable to see these information either, right? So for the, for everyone, it's all digital and there aren't deadlines for submission. You can speak to that if you'd like. Um, I don't see as a resident registered here to speak.
Yeah, definitely. Can I add?
Uh, Olivia, thanks.
Oh, yeah, you did the zoning.
No, no, that's a different Olivia. Yes, off the case.
Can I, uh, give them some, I can't even give them the pictures in here.
No, so, um, unless you've submitted them already, um, to committee.
I submitted two, but there are better ones.
Whatever you have on file, we can bring up on the screen.
That's the only thing.
That's all, yes. Got it.
Olivia, um, yeah. Requesting to remove the agenda.
It's totally released.
Well, you said until the next, to the next available, the reasonable, but it's all uh, issued, that we just see staff, blah, 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 as opposed to, uh, on the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's-
It's the, well, um, it's unfulfilled, it's called, unfulfilled.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, all people, like, um, yeah. You just see my, you see?
Good. I like, um-
Do you want to?
No, no. Well, it's already been scattered to me, right? So it's like, you feel like-
You read it the word.
Wow, we have too much for like this. Yeah, I think I sent it to the head of the hearing.
Oh, okay, you need to go and send it on, you know? Well, okay. Well, now.
On the floor? On the floor, you know?
Well, it's not pointing, uh, station number, it's just, uh, it's, uh, yes.
Yeah, you're on.
All right, we're back. Item thirteen. Sixty-four Murray Road. Purpose of this application is to construct a new municipal shelter to facilitate housing accommodations for winter maintenance staff. One variance for rear yard setback. On file material from the applicant, memo for MetroLinks. We have our agent with us? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Karen has been unmuted.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry, I got a little bit worried about the fact I couldn't unmute, unmute myself. My name is Max Murchison, and I'm here on behalf of the City of Toronto on this application.
All right. Your address?
Uh, sixty-four Murray Road.
All right. And, uh, you're in to speak to this item in person? No. Is anybody here in person? Before you get going, do we have any, nobody else in here online to speak to this item?
So, Mr. Chair, we have, uh, people have registered to speak, but it's been indicated that they are in person, but I don't see anyone-
All right. Here. Okay. So I'm going to scrap them off our list. We only have the one speaker. Yes, just to our agent, can we get your address, not the address of the application?
Yes. My name is Max Murchison of Acadia Design Consultants. And our address is three six four Supertest Road in North York, Ontario.
All right. Sir, I should ask, I did have one person or two people listed on my speaker's list in opposition. Are you aware of any opposition to the file?
No, not at all.
No, okay.
We were actually sure that there's no opposition.
All right. I'm going to ask my colleagues whether or not they require presentation. I'm seeing heads shake. Yes?
Just to find out if the applicant agrees with the MetroLinks conditions.
Sure. Uh, yes. My colleague has a question concerning some conditions that are being asked for from MetroLinks.
Yes, I'll be happy to answer those. This is actually not a condition when it comes to our application. It's actually for, if you read that, you will see it says, for development projects upcoming. We're not really proposing to develop any projects on the site. What being proposed, actually not proposed existing, uh, that has been legalized is existing buildings on site. But we're not proposing any development or apartments or condominiums. This is a municipal site.
Okay. So in your, in your submission, then, those conditions for MetroLinks are not even needed?
Yes, no, no, no. They're just general conditions that really don't belong to this application.
All right, very well. Okay, thank you. Uh, right, let's take this into committee. Yes, Mr. Margiari?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I think it's a very straightforward application. It meets the four tests clearly, and I'd like to put forward a motion to approve with no condition.
All right. Do I have a seconder by Mr. Bartolo? All in favor? That's unanimous. That application is approved without condition. All right. Item number fourteen, one fifty-five Faywood Boulevard. The purpose of this application is to construct a second story and two-story addition to the existing dwelling in conjunction with other interior and exterior alterations. Variances for south side yard setback, rear deck projection, south side yard setback for rear deck, front yard setback, main pedestrian entrance height, lot coverage, front yard soft landscaping, front stair width, second story platform area and side main wall heights. On file material from the applicant, form letters in support uh, from five St. Josephine Road, one sixteen, one fifty-one, one fifty-three, one fifty-four and one sixty-one Faywood Boulevard and one seventy-seven Clanton Park Road. Also have some plans from the applicant that came in late. We have our agent with us?
Yes, hi. My name is Noam Hassan from fourteen Leswin Road.
All right. Yes, can hear you. Alright, yes, can you hear you, just give us one moment here.
Sure.
Alright, uh, sir, I'm gonna ask for, uh, ask my colleagues if they, uh, would like a full presentation? Alright, uh, are there any questions, uh, Mister Nipfil?
Can you tell me if variance, I have a note in my notes that variance number seven may have been deleted, is, is it still before us?
No, it has been deleted, we did send the red line, uh, notice, um, so we've eliminated the front yard, uh, landscaping variance.
So are there any other variances that have been deleted, just seven?
Thank you, Mister Nipfil, yeah.
Yeah, just seven, and that was based off some feedback from community planning, um, after some discussions with them, so we, it was very minor, we reduced it, uh, to comply.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, sir, if it's alright with you, we could take this into committee.
Sure.
Alright, let's go into committee now. Uh, yes, Mister Kaboo?
Yes, Mister Chair, the relief here appears modest and in keeping with local character, so I'm more than willing to sub, to make an application for, uh, a motion for us to approve these applications, uh, submitted.
Alright.
As amended. The application is amended.
Oh, as amended.
Submitted, uh, as submitted, unless a colleague has, uh.
There was one amendment, I think they, uh, Mister Nipfil noted that one variance was removed?
With, um, yeah, subject to that, um, uh, deletion.
To the amendment, uh, which is the removal of variance seven?
As amended, not as submitted.
Uh, very good, okay, as amended, yes, uh, second by Mister Nipfil, all in favor, that's unanimous, uh, that is approved. Alright.
Thank you.
And our next two items are, uh, deferred, were deferred, uh, so item seventeen. Yeah, staff, is item seventeen part of our two PM or four PM, it is part of the four PM. It's in our two PM package.
So, there was a revised agenda, so if you can refer to that one as part of your package. Nope, it's part of your package that you received.
It is a two PM, yeah.
Through you, Mister Chair, we have already, um, heard item number seventeen, was, uh, four ninety-two Gordon Road?
Oh.
So now it's the beginning of the four PM session.
Alright, uh, let's, okay, well, we've got four minutes before we start at four PM, uh, I'll chat with staff and get this, uh, get, get us up to date, okay, uh, we'll be back in four minutes.
Okay.
Alright, we're back, four PM, we are on time. Alright. Alright, we're back, four oh one, starting our four PM time slot, uh, with number, actually, let's start with our, uh, deferral requests, uh, for a four PM time slot, starting with item number twenty-two, let's make sure. Yep, item number twenty-two, twenty-three Sifton Court. The purpose of this application is to construct a front addition with integral garage, three variances including east side yard setback, building length and front yard setback. On file material from the applicant, correspondence with community planning and a memo from urban forestry, we have our agent or applicant with us?
Mister Chair Victor has been unmuted.
Hello? We have our agent online?
We do, Mister Grootberg has been unmuted. Perhaps we can move on to the next deferral, Mister Chair, well.
Yeah, is he not, he's not available?
He's there, he's unmuted, he's.
Okay. Alright, item number twenty-three, uh, we're gonna stand down item number twenty-two, uh, item number twenty-three, thirty-eight Joyce Boulevard. Purpose of the application is to construct a new garden suite in the rear yard of the subject property, variances for soft landscaping in a rear yard, rear yard setback, north and south side yard setbacks and eve projection into a rear, rear yard setback. On file material from the applicant, uh, report from community planning, urban forestry and one objection from thirty-five Hayden Street. We have our agent with us?
Yes, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Craig Ritz of C A R Design Studio, uh, at Seven Smith Crescent, I'm the agent for the owners.
Alright, uh, sir, um, we're gonna ask for a presentation from you, uh. Oh, we have a deferral request, yes, uh, oh, so you, thank you, uh, your, uh, reason for the, uh, deferral today?
Yeah, we've been working with community planning to address some of the concerns that they had raised, uh, with respect to the proposed side yard and rear yard setbacks, uh, we have in fact made revisions, uh, to the side yard and increased the rear yard setback. Um, we've eliminated three of the previously proposed variances, uh, revised drawings, uh, or, in going back and forth through community planning, they, uh, did say that they thought generally speaking, we had addressed, uh, major concerns, and then we confirmed with them that we would be requesting the deferral today, just to allow for additional discussion to take place if necessary. Uh, revised drawings have been forwarded to the zoning examiner to prepare revised.
Alright, very good, and, uh, I should note, uh, you're aware that there is some opposition, uh, from the neighbors, it may provide an opportunity, uh, should you wish to, uh, reach out to them, see if any of those, uh, matters could be resolved?
Yeah, absolutely, we are aware of that, and of course, their concern with the rear yard setback, and that was one of the, the main, uh, revisions we've made, so we, uh, welcome the opportunity to, uh, to speak with them further on that.
Alright, very well, alright, just, uh, hold on there, we've, uh, somebody that's come down in person to speak to this item, sir, is this, you're here for this item? No, okay, uh, staff, anybody online? Alright, let's get them.
Yes, Jerry Paterna here, I'm the neighbor that, uh, filed a, uh, letter of objection.
Alright, your address?
Thirty-five Hadon Street.
Uh, sir, any, uh, issue with the request for deferral at this time?
No, I think it's a, it's a good thing, because there were issues, as he said, with community planning and also with forestry, so I think a deferral is good because it will allow the applicant some time to address those issues, so I'm in support of the deferral.
Alright, very good, thank you. Uh, we have other speakers?
Uh, that concludes the speakers, Mister Chair, the resident of one twenty-one Roslin Avenue is not present.
Alright, uh, let's go back to our agent, sir, uh, doesn't seem like there's any, uh, objection to your request for deferral, if it's alright with you, I could take this matter into committee?
That'd be great.
Alright, let's go into committee, yes, Mister Nipfil?
Mister Chairman, I'd like to move deferral of the application to allow the applicant time to, to have further discussions with planning and with the, uh, neighbors that are involved with the application.
Alright, do I have a seconder, second by Mister Bartolo, all in favor? That is unanimous, the deferral is, uh, approved.
Thank you very much.
Alright, now, uh, staff, do we have our, uh, individual, our agent back for item number twenty-two? We have him online?
Let's give Mister Grootberg a try. He's unmuted, Mister Chair.
Hello? Hello? Mister Grootberg? Hello? Alright, uh, we're gonna go to our, uh, our order, prescribed order, um, we'll try one more time, um, otherwise, uh, we will, uh, we will proceed, uh, without, uh, the agent if we can't get ahold of him. Uh, but we will try one more time, uh, when we get back to item number twenty-two, uh, okay, so, uh, just going to our first item of our four PM, uh, time slot, uh, number eighteen. Thirty-seven Falcon Street, the purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a third story addition and a new rear one-story addition, one variance before us, four eve projection. Uh, on file material from the applicant and, uh, letter from Metrolinks, do we have our agent with us? Hello? Hello?
Hi, sorry, I was muted there.
Alright, your, your name and address?
Again, it's Craig Ritz, at C A R Design Studio, at Seven Smith Crescent, agent for the owners.
Alright.
Thanks again for your time.
Alright, uh, committee members, uh, do you need a presentation for this item? Mister Ritz, it doesn't appear we need a presentation, uh, ready to take this into committee for you?
Great.
Alright, let's move into committee. Mister Margiari?
Thank you, Mister Chair, through you, it's a very straightforward application, just one, one, uh, variance that is very minor, so I'd like to put forward a motion to approve with no condition.
Alright, do I have a seconder, second by Mister Kaboo, all in favor? That's unanimous, that application is approved. Item number nineteen, sixty-four Charleswood Drive, the purpose of the application is to construct a carport and front porch canopy, four variances including front yard setback, lot coverage, canopy encroachment into a west side setback and west side yard setback. On file, I've got material from the applicant. We have Mister Torco with us?
Uh, present, can you hear me?
We can, and you're, you're, uh, your name and, uh, address, please?
Uh, Pablo Torco, nineteen eighty-five Bow Beach Boulevard, Mississauga.
Alright, sir, I'm gonna ask, uh, my members, uh, whether or not they would like a, uh, presentation? Alright, uh, I'll also ask, uh, and no questions either, alright, uh, sir, it looks like I can take this into committee for you, if, uh, that's alright?
Thank you.
Alright, let's move into committee. Mister Nipfil?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, this is an extremely, uh, simple application, one that's, I, I have no difficulty with, um, I'd like to move approval of the application subject to the conditions from planning, which says that the carport shall be remain unclosed, and the setbacks are to be in accordance with the site plan that was attached to the planning department report.
Alright, second by Mister Margiari, all in favor? That is unanimous, that is approved.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Mister Chair, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so as been the case this afternoon with this agenda, the numbering has been messed up, so we were calling on the wrong applicant for the deferral.
Okay.
So if we go back to item number twenty-two, it's actually Mister Colin Lightborn, so.
Fair enough, yes, let's give him the opportunity, uh, uh, alright, so, uh, we're, we're jumping back to item twenty-two. Oh? I, I think we can, I think we just, let's, let's stay the course, I'm, I'm gonna keep going in item number twenty.
Apologies.
Alright, uh, item number twenty is one thirty-two Orchard View Boulevard, the purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a one-story rear addition and a second story front addition. Variances, uh, include front yard setback and F S I, on file, material from the applicant, a memo from Metrolinks and five form letters in support, do we have our agent with us, Mister, Mister or Mrs. Johnson, or Miss Johnson?
Miss Johnson.
Miss Johnson, welcome, uh. Alright, um, your name and address for the record?
Bree Johnson, Silver Studio Architect, twenty-one Silver Avenue, Toronto.
Alright, thank you, uh, Miss Johnson, I've reviewed the application, I, I don't require a, a presentation from you, but I will ask my colleagues whether or not they would like to hear, I'm seeing heads shake, uh, it's alright with you, I could move into committee, uh, for a.
Perfect, you can leave me with you.
Alright, uh, let's take this into committee, yes, Mister Nipfil?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, I'd, I'd like to begin by saying this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to begin by saying this was an excellent presentation, very easy to follow, and when you have a semi, it's necessary to understand what happens, what's happening to the attached building, and the applicant clearly showed that in this case, so I appreciate that. I'd like to move approval of the application. It's very straightforward. The proposal that is before us plays great respect to the attached building, and I I would argue is is a rather sophisticated small addition. So I'd like to move approval without any conditions.
Yes, I'd say well done. Mr. Kaboo will second that motion. All right, all in favor? That's unanimous. That is approved.
Thank you very much.
All right, item number twenty-one, thirty Danesbury Avenue. The purpose of this application is to convert the existing one-story detached dwelling into a fourplex by constructing a second and a third story addition and a three-story rear addition. Six variances before us, one variance to permit a parking space in a front yard, north side yard setback, front yard landscaping driveway width, front yard landscaping, and parking space width. On file, material from the applicant, memo from urban forestry, transportation, and community planning. We have our agent or applicant with us?
Hello?
Hello?
Can you can you hear me?
We can. Your name and address, please?
My name is Colin Lightborn of C A L Designs. My address is one one six eight Gerard Street East, Toronto.
All right, thank you. I just want to confirm, sir, is you here for this item? Is anybody here in the gallery for this item? We have somebody online. All right, okay. Sir, we'll we'll get the clock up, like a brief presentation from you?
Yes, this application is, as you stated, was to convert an existing bungalow to create a fourplex. Now, the original application submitted to committee of adjustment was for six variances, as you clearly noted. However, in discussions with planning, we were able to eliminate variance one
All right.
For the front yard parking space, variance three for the front yard landscaping, variance four for the maximum driveway width, variance five for the minimum front yards off landscaping, and variance six for minimum parking space. That leaves us with just the one variance, and that variance, variance number two, was for the side yard setback on the north side. We are proposing, which is an existing condition of one point five seven meters. The bylaw requests zero point six meters. This applicant, this variance we're seeking is minor in nature, and as I said, we are now just down to the one variance.
All right, so just to, you're asking for a variance of point zero three meters on the side yard setback?
No, the existing condition is zero point five meters.
Zero point five, but the the variance being requested is.
Excuse me, zero point five seven meters.
Ah, okay, very good. I just want to confirm that the the numbers are in sync. All right, very good. Questions at this time? Mr. Bartolo?
Sorry, to the applicant, just to double check, because maybe I misheard there. The requirement is zero point six. You're saying the existing condition is zero decimal five seven, so all you are seeking on this entire application is a three-centimeter variance?
Yeah.
Ah, zero point three, that's correct.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
All right, we have another speaker online?
I'm Amelia DeAndrati. I'm call, I'm on the call on behalf of Carlos DeAndrati, my husband. So.
Your address before you get going?
Yes, it's twenty-eight Danesbury Avenue.
All right.
Can I go?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So I'm aware that we we need about fifty percent of landscaping on the front of our property. From what I see, there's only thirteen percent landscaping for the property that wants to be built. It diminishes the aesthetics of our neighborhood. We have bungalows, and everybody has maintained grass and.
Hold on, I'm gonna interject there. I've, we have one variance right now for a side yard setback. There's no variances for landscaping in the front yard. Everything, the only variance before us right now is for a side yard setback. They're requesting an additional point zero three meters to that setback. I just, I, and that's the only thing that we're making a decision on today. So I just want to, are you up to date with those modifications that were made?
No, no, I'm not.
Okay, they've eliminated the thirteen point five percent. They were, they were requesting to your submission, they were requesting front yard landscaping variance of thirteen point five percent. I've been advised that that's been removed, meaning they're no longer requesting it.
So, okay, so they're not gonna have any landscaping in the front yard?
No, they don't. They're not gonna have, they're not requesting any variance for landscaping, meaning they're going to comply with the bylaw.
Okay.
There's no special permission being asked.
Okay.
The, so the only, the only variance left, and I I will admit, this is a bit, it's a bit unusual. We get modifications, but I I don't think I've ever seen modifications to this extent. The agent has eliminated five of the six variances. There's only one variance left, and that's variance number two. They're requesting a side yard setback of point five seven meters, where point six meters is required by the bylaw. Does that, are you, does that make sense?
Yeah, not really. I wish we would have been given an update prior to this meeting, just to be, you know, aware and knowledgeable of what's going on. It would have helped.
Yeah, fair enough. It's it's a lot, a lot of times, these modifications are made on the floor, so I'm I'm happy to explain. Essentially, my understanding that the agent, and I'm gonna allow the agent to speak, but the agent has been in discussion with planning, and they've made some modifications to the proposal to essentially come into compliance with the bylaw. There's one variance that they will not, that they that they would like special permission from us, a variance for, and that's that, the only thing they're asking is for, to be point zero three meters closer than is permitted on a side yard setback. So everything else will come into compliance.
Okay, so I do have an issue with that. We do have windows on the side of our house, which means that our private, there would be privacy issues. We have a bathroom and a kitchen that they would, anybody on that side would be able to peer into.
Okay.
Which is concerning. Right now, we're we're free to open our windows and our blinds on that side, and we wouldn't be able to do that anymore.
Okay.
Okay. I do, so I'm not sure of the update with the parking, what the parking would be like, if it's gonna be, are they still doing parking in the back?
Yeah, you can ask these questions, and and the agents listening, and we're listening, and and when they provide their response, they'll be able to provide answers to all of the concerns and questions that you're raising.
Okay, so can I just go through my concerns right now, and then?
Sure.
Okay, okay, so basically, if there will be other cars parked in the back, and and parking in the front, knowing that this is a a multi-family dwelling, which our neighborhood is basically bungalows and houses, this means that there's gonna be, require more parking, and this also requires more street parking, which, right now, all the neighbors are friendly, and we all get along, and street parking has never been an issue, but with a multi-family dwelling, it, there will be some hostility with, I guess, competition for parking, because if you have a multi-unit family, multi-family in units, there's, families have more than one car most of the time. So there will be less parking. This also causes concern for children. Right now, there, we have a school at the end of the street, and there are children playing on the streets constantly. They're walking to school, and my concern is that there's more traffic in this area. There will be more traffic, because there will be more cars. And then cars are going in and out of the back parking lot, and then even in the front parking lot, like our kids are are at risk of getting hit. It's also a safety concern in the backyard. I mean, my grandkids are playing in the backyard freely, and knowing there's gonna be a parking lot in the backyard, if a ball goes over, they happen to go over without us knowing, they can get hit by a vehicle. There's also a lot of theft that's happening during the day and at night. It's a concern for me to know my kids are in, my grandkids are in the backyard, and there's someone trying to get in or steal the cars in the back, knowing that they're out there. Yeah, so basically, it it causes a risk for the kids and anybody in the area to have vehicles just coming in and out. There's, uh, sorry. So basically, yeah, so our neighborhood is pretty quiet, having a multi, having a multi-family dwelling can increase noise. Our neighborhood is a very quiet neighborhood, and we're concerned that this is gonna increase noise, it's gonna increase traffic, and we're also concerned at the fact that they will have more garbage and more garbage bins and recycle bins. I'm not sure where they're planning to place these bins, but there's a chance of lingering smells, more rodents. I don't know if anyone's gonna be putting more garbage onto my property. Not sure where the garbage bins are gonna go on garbage day, if they're blocking, if if there's so many families there, then there's gonna be more garbage bins, which means they're gonna be blocking sidewalks. Are the kids gonna have to walk on the street on garbage day? Like, where are they gonna be walking? More rodents will, you know, is a a chance of that. We're concerned about our privacy. Like I mentioned, the window is peering, they'll be peering into our space. Right now, we leave our windows open, and we're free to do that, and we won't be able to do that anymore, so it's a privacy concern.
Final comments?
Our, yeah, that's it, basically. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Of course. Yep, go on.
So there's one more, one more thing is most of our, most of them are owners that live on this, in this neighborhood. We don't really have that many renters. And we've spent a lot of time building relationship, and knowing that there's gonna be people coming in and out is kind of a concern for us, too, so it it kind of just raises the fact that we might, there might be more, I guess, concerns with people and relationship, and.
Well, just because they're renting doesn't mean you can't have a relationship with them. I mean, regardless if they're renting or they're owning, they're gonna be your neighbors, so you you may wanna.
My, no, no, my concern is that when when you're renting, it's like people can rent for a year or two. These are longstanding owners, right? So we've been, we've been a part of the community for for years, like thirty, thirty years and counting. So when you have renters, they're coming in and out, it can be a year, it can be two years, it can be three, and it can be, you know, it can be an issue, you know, to get along with people that are coming in and out.
Fair enough. My colleague has a question, Mr. Nipfel?
Actually, could we get the site plan on the screen for this lady to see? Because the site plan I've got doesn't have parking in the rear yard. There.
Okay.
Now, the site plan is confusing. I'm gonna ask the applicant to explain it, but according to this drawing, there's a driveway. It doesn't indicate where it ends, but the whole backyard is labeled as soft landscaping. There is no parking shown on this site plan.
Okay, so the original site plan does show parking in the backyard.
So we're gonna ha- have to ask him to clarify what the proposal is, because this is what we have before us.
It'll be helpful to get, I think, some clarification on the parking. I I had a question about that as well. Perhaps I'll take the opportunity to ask the applicant about window placement on the side, and how that may or may not align with the immediate neighbor.
Garbage collection, where is it?
Yeah, as well as garbage collection, okay. Is that, any other questions?
No, that was, oh, thank you.
All right, thank, thank you very much to the immediate neighbor. I I'd like to turn it back to the agent now, and I I'd like to provide them an opportunity to respond to some of the concerns that were raised by the immediate number, sorry, by the immediate neighbor at number twenty-eight.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Colin Lightborn. I've heard some of your concerns. I'll do my best to answer them. Now, the the zoning bylaw for a duplex, we are not required to provide parking on-site. So the initial plan was to have parking in the front yard, but we have eliminated eliminated those those variances, as I stated earlier. We will be providing one parking space, which is not required, but we will provide one parking space on-site. Now, you're the house to the south of us, and between your north wall and the south wall of the proposed duplex, there is a driveway, and we are about, if I can look at my survey here. We are to the property line from the south wall of number thirty, three point three five four meters. So, and then there is an additional two to three, one or two meters from the south property line to your main wall. So I can understand your concerns. I will do my best to make sure that there will be no sightlines, direct sightlines, when I place my windows on the side yard, to look directly into your bathroom window. I'm I'm aware of your house and and the location. In terms of garbage, that that is a concern that I'm sure the owners will take care of. I'm sure they're going to have someone to manage the the garbage. I know the city will be picking up the garbage, but the location of the garbage will be at the side of the house, because we do have about, as I stated, three point three five meters in the side yard. So these these little issues are not truly addressing the one variance that we are seeking, but I'm sure my, the owner of the property will will speak to you and work something out to assure you that garbage will be properly cared for. I can't address the issues concerning grandchildren climbing over the fence to retrieve a ball in the side yard, but as far as as planned, we will provide just one parking space on-site, because the bylaw does not require parking space for a duplex. I hope, I I hope I'm able to answer your questions.
All right, thank you for that. Any further questions, Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We need a site plan of what it is you're proposing, and the site plan that we have is the one that was on the screen, and it isn't clear. We we need a better drawing. In this drawing, you said you're gonna provide parking, you're gonna provide one car park. Where is it going to go? We need, we need to show where it is on the site plan. There's an existing, excuse me one second, because a whole bunch.
There's an existing driveway.
Just a second.
Well, hold on, let him finish.
There's an existing driveway shown, and then there's a dotted line where you're gonna take the concrete block garage off, but can you keep the site plan on the screen? What happens beyond the dotted concrete block garage, there's, there's no indication. At the back, you've indicated the entire backyard is, you've indicated the entire backyard is land soft landscaping, which would clearly eliminate many of the neighbors' concerns, but I, this site plan isn't telling us that. And garbage, you need to show us how you're going to store it and how you're gonna get it out to the street. Even though there's only one variance, we have to make sure that the project that you're proposing is going to work, and in this particular case, the site plan leaves. And in this particular case, the site plan leaves, it's not clear. It isn't clear at all.
Okay, uh, as I stated earlier, we are not required to show parking on-site. And that's the reason why I did not show parking on-site because it's not required for four-placks, it's not required for garden suite. We can show one parking space, uh, in the side yard behind the main front wall. And so if, if parking is not required by, by the zoning bylaw, I don't really necessarily have to show it on the site plan. However, if you would like to see a revised site plan showing where the proposed parking space will be located behind the main front wall, it could be anywhere behind the main front wall. The fact that it's not required, I'm just showing it on there just in the event that the owner of the property wants to put in a parking space.
What it, what is, what is, what is planned, what is planned for the remainder of that large side yard and what is planned for the rear yard?
Uh, we are planning to propose a garden suite at the back, which does not require parking. It does require two, um, cycle bicycle parking space. That is not shown on the plan because we are applying to the committee of adjustment for that at a later date. Right now, the application is focused on the existing building consisting of four units. And as I stated, and I will state again, zoning bylaw does not require parking for duplex. In terms of garbage, I can give you a revised site plan showing, showing where garbage storage will be placed and hopefully that will address your concerns as well as the neighbors' concerns. And I believe, uh, garbage location on-site is not in the zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right. Any other questions? Okay, let's take this into committee. Mr. Niffel.
Mr. Chairman, um, this is the first time I've heard that argument. I don't agree with it. Um, we're here to make sure that the variances that are requested um, result in projects that are, um, a benefit to the community and are compliant with the bylaw as altered. I don't frankly feel comfortable making a decision on this application because the site plan doesn't tell me anything. Um, I, the lady next door is of the opinion that the backyard's parking. Um, the drawing indicates that the backyard's soft landscaping. The applicant says, well, no, it's actually going to be a garden suite. I don't frankly feel that the applicant has provided us with the necessary information to make a decision on this.
Yeah, fair enough. I'll just add to that. Um, whether or not it's, I, I, I take the applicant's submission. It's not, parking's not a requirement. Um, but, uh, where, where I, where I also have issue is if, if the intent is that you, you're intending to have a parking space, then you need to convey that, you need to show that as part of the application. Just because it's an as-of-right, um, it, it, it doesn't really, I, I, you know, we, we use word, the phrase complete application, right? Um, that really is a, an application which has, i- i- is really, uh, showing us everything that we need to, uh, see. It's not intentionally emitting, uh, certain, certain items. So I, I, I do have some concern with that. I, I don't know maybe how my other members feel because really, we're only left with one variance. Um, generally, it would be supportive of the variance, particularly that it's an existing, uh, foundation that they're trying to build on top of. Um, whether or not the point zero three meters, three centimeters, uh, is I, I, I'm not sure whether or not that impact is even, I, I could even register that. So I, I'll ask my colleagues how they feel. Mr. Bartolo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, on balance with the elimination of all the variances here and we're talking about three centimeters, I don't have a problem with it. The submission package is, like, it's poor quality, to be honest. It's hard to follow. Um, and I would, if there's going to be further variances on this property in the future for the garden suite, I'd encourage them to really tighten up their site plan and provide it. Um, and I understand the frustration of my colleagues and, and I echo that. But for what's being asked for, um, and the, the product I have, I can, and the fact that it's an existing condition, I, I can get behind the application for the sake of three centimeters and push this along.
See where it goes?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I, I, I will follow Mr. Bartolo's, uh, position because I see here just three centimeters, which doesn't, and on this, on this structure, which is already existing, it's not, I, for me, it's not a new structure. And I think we had a sort of similar situation last year. I don't want to guess the intention of the applicant now. I need to follow, uh, what we have in front of us as material
Yeah.
in the application, not what hypothetically, what the applicant may want to do in the future. So as Mr. Bartolo said, I'm more than willing to support this application as, as revised.
All right, maybe motion?
Maybe I'll put forward a motion to you, Mr. Chair. I'll put forward a motion to approve this application as revised.
All right, I have a second by Mr. Bartolo. All in favor? Opposed, Mr. Niffel, for the record? All right, uh, the motion carries. The application as modified is approved.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Nope.
Mr. Chairman?
Nope. Uh, we're on to item number twenty-two right now. Um, to our agent, uh, online, if you have any further comment, I would ask that you email, uh, city staff, uh, and that we can get you sorted. All right, item number twenty-two has been, we defer that one already. Are we back on? Sorry, just, uh, do we have our agent back for item number twenty-two? Or it was individual?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair, I'm here.
Welcome. All right, finally. Uh, sir, just hold on there for a second. So, uh, we're on item number twenty-two, twenty-three Sifton Court. The purpose of the application is to construct a front addition with integral garage, three variances, east side yard setback, building length and front yard setback, on file material from the applicant, correspondence with community planning and a memo from Urban Forestry. We have our agent with us, uh, Mr. Gubberg?
Yes.
Uh, your, your full name and address for the record, sir?
Uh, Victor Gubberg, thirty-three Belvedere Crescent, Enrichment Hill. Uh, I'm an architect for Gubberg Grouping.
All right, and you are requesting a deferral of this?
I'm following, I'm following the request for deferral from, uh, Toronto Region Conservation Authority. So basically, we applied for TRCA permit and initially they expressed no concerns uh, about our variances, but at the very last minute, they sort of said that, uh, they have problem with converting existing garage into, into living space because they suspect that, uh, uh, stable top of slope goes through, through this garage. That's what their conservative assessment. Uh, visually it doesn't, but they want us to prove that the stable top of slope doesn't go through the garage. Otherwise, they would not support increase in, in, in the living space. They have no concern about variances whatsoever because our extension proposal is in front of the house, uh, beyond the conservation limits. But nevertheless, they requested the deferral, so I guess I probably have no choice but to, to, to echo it and, uh, yeah.
All right. Okay, understood. Yeah, that, that makes sense. Um, any questions? All right, uh, let's take this matter into committee. Mr. Bartolo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'll put forward a motion to defer this application to allow the applicant to coordinate with, uh, ravine and natural feature protection on this file.
Sure, uh, before, uh, sir, you're not here for this item?
No, no, three, three thirty-two, Brighton.
Okay, just want to make sure I don't miss you. All right, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bartolo, uh, we had a motion, uh, that you're putting forth and
To defer.
To defer the application and that's seconded by Mr. Kaboo. All in favor? All right, uh, and that, uh, deferral request is granted. Uh, Mr. Margiari, for the record, Mr. Margiari stepping out now, uh, and, uh, we are down to four members. We're just heading, uh, item number twenty-three, thirty-eight Joyce Boulevard, we dealt with. That item was deferred. Uh, we're now moving on to item number twenty-four, three thirty-two Brighton Avenue. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing detached dwelling by constructing a rear addition and a rear, a new rear deck, uh, variances for setback from an east lot line, lot coverage, rear yard setback, and five variances related to stairwinds, uh, as well as one variance, uh, related to platform area. On file, I've got material from the applicant. Uh,
Okay.
I presume you are the agent, sir?
Yes.
All right, um, your name and address for the rec?
My name's Warner Cramm. And the address, I'll give you the work, one seventy Esno Park. I work for a company called Perrinwood, who's the agent, and we are the agent for Mr. Morrison.
All right, fantastic. Um, before we get going, I'm just going to ask staff, we don't have anybody else online, uh, for this item? All right, sir, I'm going to ask my colleagues whether or not they require a full presentation from you or if they have any questions.
Okay.
Mr. Niffel.
Have you seen, thank you, Mr. Chairman, have you seen the planning report?
Yes, uh, I will discuss, yes.
Okay, as long as you've seen it. You've seen it?
Yes.
Okay.
I will address some of those issues and make it clear.
All right, um, so I will, uh, we'll ask for a presentation from you. Um, and, and perhaps maybe you just focus more on, it, some of the discussions, it'd be helpful for us to understand uh, some of the discussions that you may have had with, uh, community planning and uh, why there may be a difference of, uh, opinion, uh, with respect to the application.
Um, I just have a question. I don't know, uh, the twenty-seventh, I sent Sam a petition of support from the neighbors. I don't know whether that got in the file or whether.
Oh, uh, well, we will, we'll confirm, uh, did we, staff, do we have, um, a letter, any letters of support from neighbors on this file? Uh, there we go. And that's, um,
All right, that's the neighbors left and right, rear around, and one neighbor across the street from number three thirty-three Brighton.
All right.
All right, so just, um, all right, um, just regarding the planning, yeah. August twentieth, I first received an email from Wilser, uh, about his concerns. I called three days in a row, couldn't get a hold of him. Friday, I sent him an email stating my, some of my facts. And then the next correspondence I had was, I think, the twenty-second where he replied and, and his position was still the same, but, uh, he never did talk to me. So we're here for an application for addition on what used to be um, in that neighborhood, it used to be what they call a raised bungalow. All right, the bylaw then changed in nineteen twenty-two as the zoning examiner Olivia told me that now the interpretation, how the floors were interpreted have changed. On this house now, it made the basement the first floor. All right, that's important because of the deck then. So what we're proposing is a rear addition on the house. Mr. Morrison just purchased the house recently. He has moved in town closer, closer to his family. He also runs a, an, um, a business out of his office. So what we decided on and what he would like was a back bedroom, which is smallest on the, the back rear, I believe it's the east side, that's where the addition would go. And, and creates an office, office space plus a little bit of seating for looking out the backyard and, and new entrance to the backyard other than the side door. And, uh, so the variances are required for that. One is for the side yard setback, I believe, on, uh, uh, the east side, which is variance number one, which is two thirty-nine. That's in order to line up to the existing house wall. All right, then variance number two, because of the addition size, um, the, the percentage of lot coverage goes to thirty point four. And the size and, and the projection into the rear yard of the addition, which is, um, twelve feet by about sixteen feet. The twelve feet projection in the backyard causes number three of the variance for the rear yard. All right, and because, and number four, a lot of these for the stairs, number four pedestrian, are, are because of the width. Now, on one side, we have a ten-foot patio door and, and there are stairs going down to the deck, which is only twenty-four inches above the grade. So the stairs encompass the whole width. If you look at the plans there, they encompass the whole width of the addition and they go down to the deck, which is that grade. And that's what these ones are for, they're, they're for. Number five is still the stairs and it's called pedestrian walkway. There's, there's two sets of stairs going around the deck down to the grade. And all these seem to have caused because they are longer than the two meters it requires a variance. It'd be nice to have the stairs to wrap around so you can sit on them. Other than that, you have a two-foot drop either, you have to put planters or railing or something. It, it's safer just to have, I am up at the cottage, you sit on the stairs, it's enjoyable. You're down low and because the deck is so low, the privacy issues for the neighbors isn't an issue, I believe. Uh, even the addition on the east side, if you look there, that east side, that's the closest to, the closest neighbor. There's only one window there. The rest of the wall is solid. All right, and that, and, um, so those are most of the shares. Now, item number seven, which is the maximum permitted area of a platform located at or above the second floor. All right, I think there are pictures in there of the house. This, this is a raised bungalow, but we get caught for the technicality because the bylaw got changed, that the first floor is now the second floor and now the deck is called a platform, where, which the deck is going to be on the ground. And, and, and we're limited by the fact that we're caught with this change in the bylaw to only four meters square. I understand the principle because the house across the road at three thirty-three, which is a new building, has, uh, on the back, he even has a patio out the second floor, if you're talking about privacy. And he has a platform that confide, confine, con, conforms to this four meter square. Um, and that, number, item number six are just, item number eight and nine, they're basically for the stairs. Uh, I think it's appropriate, that, if you look at the drawings, the deck's only two feet off the ground. I understand the width of the stairs. Uh, you'd be limiting us by wrapping the stairs all the way around. If the committee deems that is not appropriate, well, we, we will cut it back. Well, we prefer to have the stairs wrap all around the deck area. And that, that, that's, that's, that's our proposal for the proposal. I believe it's, it's minor. Yeah, the, the area is, um, a lot of raised bungalows. It's sizeless and there are new, and there are new, new two stories coming out. Uh, as Wilster says in, in his, in his comments, uh, the platform, to ensure that the size of the platform and considering the physical character of the neighborhood to mitigate impact upon privacy, um, overlooking issues. The deck's on the ground, the platform's on the ground. Uh, and that, and then he goes on to say, and, you know, the intent of the regulation, the rear yard setback, the neighborhood overlooking privacy issues, open space, there's no change to the grading, there's no trees being hurt, the water. There's no trees being hurt. The water is contained on the ground. There's enough grass all around. The deck is pervious. The water goes through the deck and on the ground below. So I don't I don't believe that that his concern, he's got policy four point one point five development criteria, prevailing heights, mass scale, density, setbacks, landscaping. I I believe I believe we we meet all those criterias for this proposal. And that's the end of it.
All right, thank you. Questions? All right, it looks like we could take this into committee for you for a decision. So uh staff, no other speakers on the line? All right. Uh okay, thank you. You can step down. Uh let's take this into committee for brief discussion. Yes, Mr. Niffel.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can understand why the planning department filed their recommendations. But as the applicant, I think, has quite clearly indicated, I don't really think they make a lot of sense in this particular case. He's proposing a deck, which is basically a slightly raised platform above grade that doesn't seem to create any problems with, um excuse me, with with neighbors. The idea of the stairs, I I have to say, the idea of having stairs wrapping around is actually a very nice design feature. And I realize it doesn't comply with the bylaw, but I think that's the reason why variances are here, to change to change that when it makes sense. So I agree with what the applicant wants to do. The only concern that I had was with the actual extension back and whether or not it posed any problems for the two neighbors, which are three thirty and three thirty-four. And they haven't commented. I'm assuming that the applicant has has contacted him. There hasn't been any any negative uh opposition. Well, it can't be positive opposition. There hasn't been any opposition um that I'm aware of, and based on the information that we have before us, uh and a good example of why we need details of these, this is a good site plan, shows shows the details. I have no difficulty supporting the application, and I wouldn't be supporting the um planning department's recommendation of refusal.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Niffel. I I'm I'm actually surprised to see them raise concern over the stair width, uh particularly in the backyard and particularly at that height. I too shared the same uh the I think the only thing I was a little concerned was that the reduced rear yard setback. But to your point, um looking at the adjacencies, it's actually the really sensible uh form of intensification because the immediate neighbor at three thirty has a frame building in the backyard, which already helps to mitigate uh the impact there. Uh and in addition, at the rear lot line, uh there's some additional frame buildings there. The rear neighbors, so they're not going to be impacted. Um and then while I do acknowledge uh planning's concern that there's it 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 there's not a lot of space in the backyard. If you look at what's being proposed, so the one-story addition and new deck in relationship to the backyard overall, it's it's pretty modest. So I I I too would be willing to uh support this uh this application.
I would definitely support the application, Mr. Chair.
All right, it seems all of everybody's on board, uh Mr. Niffel. Maybe a motion?
I'd like to move approval of the application, Mr. Chairman, without any conditions. I think it clearly meets the three tests, the four tests, sorry, and um I think it is uh it's a good solution.
It is, yeah. And hand drawn. That. Um all right, a do I have a seconder for that motion? Uh Mr. Kaboo, all in favor? That's unanimous. That application is approved. Do you have your approval, sir?
Thank you very much for your time, and that's because hand drawing is old school. I'm old.
All right. It's good to see uh once in a while.
Yes, the pleasure being here.
All right, thank you. All right, last item of the day, item number twenty-five, fifty-eight Stibbert Avenue. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear one-story addition, one variance before us for FSI. On file, material from the applicant. We have anybody, we have our agent here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Jay Smith, agent for the application. My address is twenty-eight fourteen Hollington Crescent in Mississauga.
All right, Mr. Smith, I am going to ask my colleagues whether they'd like a presentation. I see heads shake. If it's all right with you, we take this into committee?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right, let's move this into committee. Mr. Bartolo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh it's a very straightforward application from my point of view. Uh the FSI is not triggering any other variances. Uh it's uh in keeping with uh the neighborhood, and I believe it meets the four tests. Therefore, I will put forward a motion to approve this application.
All right, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Mr. Niffel. All in favor? That's unanimous. That application is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, the time is now four fifty-nine. That concludes our hearing for the day. Uh thank you, staff. Thank you, members. Uh we need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Kaboo. All in favor? Unanimous, we're adjourned. Thank you.